Call to order, the Riviera Beach Workshop City Council Meeting on August 19, 2019, 6:02 PM. Madam Roque. My check. Mayor Ronnie Felder. Chairperson Kishamba Miller Anderson.
Present.
Chairperson Tim Julia Botell.
Here.
Councilperson Trodrick McCoy.
Here.
Councilperson Shirley Lanier.
Yeah.
Councilperson Douglas Lawson.
Here.
City Manager Jonathan Evans.
Present.
City Clerk Claudine Anthony is present. City Attorney Dawn Nguyen.
Here.
And Madam Chair, we have with us today Dr. Deborah Robinson, Palm Beach County School Board, District 7. All right, we'll have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman McCoy.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam, Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair and members of the board, the item before you today is to discuss the status of the educational institutions we have here in the city of Riviera Beach. We have the distinct honor and pleasure of having school board member Mrs. Deborah Robinson and some other faculty and staff here to provide an insight and a perspective concerning our schools here in Riviera Beach. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
The sound is good?
Yes. Pull it down a little bit till you, yeah, it'll pick it up.
Like that?
No, pull it, pull the whole thing down.
To me?
Yeah.
Like that? We're good?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you. I'm excited! Okay, all right, let me talk. So, I've been looking forward to this conversation for many, many months. So I'm really excited about the prospects of us working together. And before I go on, first let me thank you for the outstanding teacher appreciation event that was held this past Friday. So I want you to know, our teachers and staff work hard. And I especially want to thank the City Manager Jonathan Evans, Deirdre Jacobs, the Riviera Beach CRA, Pittman Law Group, and Andrew Gillum. So now, Councilwoman Lanier told me that she would like to make this an annual event, and I look forward to working with you on that. So before I get started with my presentation, I want to try to be politically correct and name the people. Okay, so first off, no school board members, right? I don't see any other school board members, okay. All right, and the Supes not here, deputies not here. Our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Glenda Sheffield, is here. Yay! Our Chief of Staff Ed Tierney is here. Our Regional Superintendent, Dr. Camille Coleman, is here. Our Instructional Superintendent is Dr. Joseph Lee, Robin Brown, and is Maria Bishop here? No, okay, thank you. And then we have a number of principals and school-based staff here, principals and school-based staff. Would you please stand so we can applaud you? And as I go on, when I do a brief overview of each of your schools, I would just ask that you would stand. And I guess I was ignoring the Chief of HR, I'm so sorry. K'Zalo Lakaba, thank you. All right, and so before I go on, let me also thank my executive right hand, Toni Bellotti, who's not here. But she really worked to put this together so that it was a good presentation. And Mr. Mark Howard, our Chief of Performance Accountability, who helped me pull together the data. So we're gonna get started, I want you to know, we have around 50 slides, and so I'm gonna ask, if you would, if it's not out of order, to ask you to write down your questions. And then at the end of my part, then at the end of Dr. Dupont's part, and at the end, very end, we'll be happy to take your questions. So, moving forward. So you see our mission, our vision and mission statement of the Palm Beach County School District? For me, the most important words in our vision include "all learners reach their highest potential to succeed in the global economy." Well, that includes Riviera Beach learners, right? And then our mission is talking about excellence and equity, which is a very important word. And I won't get into that definition now. But in addition, it includes the words "knowledge, skills, and ethics required for responsible citizenship and productive careers." So I'm hoping that we will work together to make that a reality for children in Riviera Beach. Here's the graphic of our five-year strategic plan. The council has that in their little package because it is a bit difficult to read. But you will see that under strategic theme, the strategic theme of positive and supportive climate, the second item is to secure parent and community partnerships to support academic and social emotional development of our students. And that is why we are here today to, I'm hoping, to enter into a long-term partnership that will benefit the students of Riviera Beach. Now, this is a graphic from the SHOT Foundation's Loving Cities Report. And you will note that the foundation to outstanding academic success includes physical and mental health and social and economic stability. Now, moving on, the council also has this in their package. This is the boundary map for Riviera Beach Elementary Schools. And just so the public knows, you can view the boundaries for all of our schools on the school district's website, which is palmbeachschools.org. Washington Elementary, I saw Carissa Battle in the house. Carissa Battle is in her second year as principal at Washington Elementary School. I want to say that Washington is currently housed at Lincoln Elementary while the school is being modernized. The new Washington Elementary is expected to be occupied in July 2021. And we will have community presentations on the plans for that facility in the near future. And I count on you to hold me to that. Further, I want to say that Washington is a small school, but they have the highest percent of proficient readers of the Riviera Beach Elementary Schools. Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Elementary is led by Katrina Granger, the woman that some of us refer to as Mother Teresa. I have to say that she leads this school with her skills, her love, and her wisdom. So Bethune has the largest enrollment of all the Riviera Beach Elementary Schools, and they educate three-year-olds through fifth grade. They have supports for students in place from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and they have special programming for ESE students. Mrs. Granger is frustrated because the school was three points from earning a B this year, and so she has every intention of getting that B next year. Moving on, Grove Park Elementary. Now Grove Park, if you look at their boundary map, their boundaries includes a small portion of western Riviera Beach. The school is led by Joanne Rogers. Their school is also being modernized, and as the school district staff found out, when they want to present plans for the new facility, they have a very involved school community. Lincoln Elementary is led by Alicia Porter. She has a school parent meeting or something today, so she couldn't be at that meeting. So Lincoln Elementary is really focused on improving literacy at every level. And you will see their list of after-school programs and partnerships there. West Riviera Elementary is led by brand spanking new principal, okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Alicia McKnight, who had been Assistant Principal at JFK, so she is very familiar with Riviera Beach. I have to say that I'm pretty partial to West Riviera since two of my sons attended West Riv. Their focus is on literacy. And in their focus on literacy, now, I might get challenged on this, but they took their eyes a bit off of math, which is what caused the school grade to drop. But they were off of the state's low 300 list, and so that itself is an accomplishment. And we, okay. And so I have every expectation that that grade is gonna come back up, and especially as we work in partnership. So now, let's go to some elementary school data. So, the demographics, you will see, just in case you didn't know, that the elementary school population in 33404 is overwhelmingly black and overwhelmingly qualifies for free or reduced lunch. So I pulled this up just before the meeting, so just so you know, that for a family of four, you will qualify for reduced lunch at an income level of $46,000 a year. So at this school then, I mean, in Riviera Beach schools, approximately 90% of the students qualify for free or reduced lunch. Now, if you move over to the last set of bars, there's students with disabilities. And you will see, for each of these bars, Riviera Beach Elementary is in blue, school district is in yellow, and statewide is in gray. So you see, for students with disability, it's more or less the same, same percentage-wise for Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, and the state. Now, this is one of my favorite slides. So Riviera Beach here is defined as 33404, and actually, in all these slides, I think it's defined as 33404. So you will see here that on the slide on the left, so these are students, both of these sets of bar graphs on the left reflect the students that just started fifth grade. So when those students entered kindergarten, on the kindergarten readiness assessment, which was the fair at the time, only 8.5% were considered ready for kindergarten in August of 2014. So the teachers in Riviera Beach worked hard. And then by the time those students went third grade, 30% of those students were level three or above, which is what we're gonna call proficiency for this conversation. 30% were level three and above. Now, we're not at all happy about that. 30% is nowhere near what I would call success. Honestly, neither is the 56% or 57% that represents the district and the state for third grade reading. But the reason I had staff answer this question for me was I wanted to show that students came in at 8.5% ready for kindergarten, and there was a 21.5% increase in readiness or proficiency by third grade. So that was in Riviera Beach. The school district had a 22% increase from kindergarten to third, and statewide, the increase was 21% from kindergarten to third. So, as generally speaking, wherever they came in, by third grade, there was 20% more of the students were deemed proficient. So now, if we look on the right, the one that's labeled absences, again, blue is Riviera Beach, yellow is Palm Beach County School District. 9% of the elementary students in 33404 missed 15 or more days of school last school year. That's an adult problem, right? So district-wide, it was 5%. And actually, if you tease out the school district's data even more, you will find an awful lot of that 5% for the school district are Latinx. And we know some of the social reasons why there's absences in that community. So if you look at out-of-school suspension, the blue bar is Riviera Beach, the yellow bar again is Palm Beach County School District. So these are students that had at least one day of out-of-school suspension. One student could have had 15 days out-of-school suspension, but it only shows up in this data count as one. So one day or 15 days is counted the same here. So 4% of students had at least one day of out-of-school suspension compared to the district average of 2%. Moving on. So in this chart, I wanted to look at who chooses to go to their home school. So you'll see, and you see the names of the schools, the next column is the number of students who live in 33404 that are assigned to that, who are attending their assigned school, excuse me. So in the first one is Dr. Bethune, 385 students who were assigned to that school, actually attended that school. And then 270 students who were assigned to that school chose to go elsewhere. So 59% of the students who were assigned via boundaries to attend Bethune, attended Bethune. For Grove Park, and again, this is 33404. So for Grove Park, 39% of 33404 that was assigned there attended. Lincoln was 56%, Washington 50%, West Riv 62, right? So we could look at why that is. It may be that these children chose to go to a different school for a choice program, or it might just be some measure of dissatisfaction. Or it might be some reason that we have yet to identify. So that's elementary. I'm gonna move on to middle. Here's your middle school boundaries. So you will note at the bottom there, Bot Middle School of the Arts is a green dot. It's a green dot because it has no boundaries. The surround, that's actually my neighborhood, and we are bounded to go to JFK. The salmon color at the far left bottom is Bear Lakes, part of Bear Lakes Boundaries. So you'll see that Bear Lakes picks up a small western, southwestern portion of Riviera Beach. So Bear Lakes is led by Mr. Kirk Howe and our esteemed chairperson, Kishamba Miller Anderson. Mr. Howe is unable to attend. So I can tell you, in meeting with him, he is very proud of his statistic that 50% of their eighth graders going to high school had one or more high school credits. Moving on, we have Howe Watkins, and the new principal, Wilder Thomas, is in the house. So this is her first year as principal at Howe Watkins, coming from elementary school and having done an outstanding job there. Howe Watkins, amongst other things, that is near and dear to me with Howe Watkins, is the partnership that their pre-medical sciences program has with one of the organizations I'm a member of, and that's the T. Leroy Jefferson Medical Society. And if you have not seen them, you have to see them. They do an outstanding job, including the graduation, where the students would get stethoscopes and have breakfast in the boardroom at Good Samaritan and so forth. But they do a very good mentoring exercise with those young people. Moving on, John F. Kennedy. Okay, so I'm a Viking. My oldest son went to Kennedy. Kennedy is also near and dear to my heart. The principal, Ricky Clark, is in his second year leading that school. He's unable to attend because he's dropping his daughter off at college. Again, the grade dropped from a C to a D, but note is made that they were only three points away from maintaining that C. And the focus this year will be on tight monitoring of the instruction and focusing student conversations around high expectations of their learning. All right, we have our demographics again here. I think it's probably no surprise, the pattern is somewhat similar to elementary school. I make note that here, the percentage of students identified with disabilities has bumped up a little bit when compared to the district and the state. I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't know if those students really have a disability, right? That, how about, that's work in progress, and I look forward to you partnering with me to make sure that there's no more failures of adults to engage and prevent children from walking down this road to being labeled with a disability when they might not have one. Okay, moving on, middle school reading. So again, third grade reading in Riviera Beach went from 30% now to 32% for, in eighth grade. So that's a 2% gain. For the district, there was a 3% gain, and for the state, there was a 1% gain. So again, we started school behind, we made progress, but we stayed behind. The progress was just not enough. So you will also see the data for eighth graders enrolled in Algebra I. Now, this to me is very important. Algebra I is a gateway course to all the STEM careers. I would love to see every eighth grader taking Algebra I if they haven't taken it prior. This graph tells you who was enrolled. It does not tell you who successfully completed Algebra I, so that's another data metric that I need to pull. And you will see that there's, what is that, 7% disparity between Riviera Beach and the state for Algebra I eighth grade participation. Moving on, then we have the absences. 5% of middle schoolers in 33404 had more than 15 days absent. And then you see this big jump to 13% in out-of-school suspensions. So again, that's at least one day of out-of-school suspension. We went from 4% out-of-school suspension in elementary to 13% in middle school in Riviera Beach. For the district, it went from 2% to 6%. So there's a lot of room for improvement here, right? Now, who chooses to go elsewhere? So this is the same data pattern as for elementary schools. So for Bear Lakes, 63% of, and these are small numbers, assigned to Bear Lakes out of 33404. But 63% of those assigned chose to go to Bear Lakes. For Howe Watkins, it was 77%. John F. Kennedy was 42%. Watson B. Duncan, why do I have Watson B. Duncan on here? Was 68%. Okay. So, here we have room for us to improve JFK's programming and reputation. Because I can tell you from the phone calls I get, an awful lot of that, being only 42% is reputation. Moving on to high school. So again, you will see, where is it? Can you see Suncoast on there? Okay, yeah, because I can't see it. Oh, there it is, okay. So Suncoast again, is green again because it has no boundaries, but it's physically located in the city of Riviera Beach.
I don't see Inlet Grove on here either.
You can't see it on there either?
No, she's looking for Inlet Grove.
Oh, Inlet Grove is not on there. Is Emma here?
They don't have a family.
Oh, don't tell her, just don't tell her. Okay, all right, we're just moving on. Okay, moving on, moving on, okay. High school students. Now, this is a little bit different. So this is, for each of these schools, the percentage of students that live in 33404 that attend that school, no, let me do it the other way. The percentage of the school's population that lives in 33404, okay? So Dwyer, 23% in 33404. Palm Beach Gardens, 26% in 33404. And Palm Beach Lakes, only 2% in 33404. Palm Beach Gardens High School. Palm Beach Gardens High School is led by Dr. Donald Hoffman. You stand for us? Thank you. He's in, starting his second year as principal at Palm Beach Gardens High School after leading Howe Watkins Middle School. So you know, Palm Beach Gardens has a longstanding relationship with the Riviera Beach community. You will see the programs here that have the asterix, which is the Navy Junior ROTC. I think it's just because it's only in boundary students. Am I right? Okay. So the other ones have a larger catchment area. Palm Beach Lakes High School. Palm Beach Lakes High School is led by David Alfonso, who actually was last year's, is he here? Alfonso's here, he's hiding in the back? Okay, Mr. Alfonso is here? So actually, Mr. Alfonso was this past school year's Principal of the Year. I will tell you that, I think I'm a Ram. I have a Palm Beach Lakes Black Student Union jacket, which I'm gonna wear to the school board meeting soon, okay? And then, and I also made note on this, he's gonna laugh. So because Mr. Alfonso has heard me talk about Howard all the time, heard all the HBCU grads talk about their HBCUs, he proclaimed Palm Beach Lakes an HBHS, okay? It's a historically black high school, okay? And he intends for his students, he intends for his students to graduate from Palm Beach Lakes and go on in their lives, and to brag about their Palm Beach Lakes experience, just like I brag about Howard, okay? William T. Dwyer High School is led by Cory Brooks, his second year as principal there, formerly the principal at John F. Kennedy Middle School. He is not here today. But I can tell you that when Mr. Brooks went to Dwyer, he brought a new and welcoming climate to that campus. I'm going to specifically ask that you recruit students for the Finance Academy. That's the Money Handling Academy, okay? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Demographics. So here we go, the pattern is familiar. Actually, and it's more or less like middle school in all components. The percentage that apply for free or reduced lunch tends to decrease when kids get to high school, but the relative pattern remains the same. Okay, acceleration and graduation. So on the left, the first two bars, so grade nine through 12 acceleration. So this includes students who have taken advanced placement, international baccalaureate, the A, so the dual enrollment. So these are the kids that are in classes that are designed to prepare them for college, right? So we're really lagging behind here. It's 20% for 33404 and 41% for the school district. We could not pull the data for the state. So moving on to graduation. So the one that says graduation rate. So the one that says graduation rate, all, is all, so all demographics. And these are standard diplomas. These are not certificates of completion or any of the other variations. So we have seventy-nine percent of students in 33404 are graduating with their cohort, meaning four years after entering ninth grade. Ninety-one percent for the school district as a whole, and eighty-six percent for the state as a whole. And so then, the next one is the black graduation rate. So, if you compare Riviera Beach at seventy-nine percent, black students throughout Palm Beach County graduate at eighty-three percent, and the state at eighty-one percent. Then we move over to attendance. Okay, so we're skipping school, right? So that's eighteen percent of high school students in 33404 had fifteen or more days absent. And so you can imagine what the correlation is between missing class and graduation, right? And so, it's my theory that if we can get that, that blue absence number down, 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 we're gonna see that blue graduation number go up, up, up. And then when we look at out-of-school suspension. So it's eleven percent, again, one day or more out-of-school suspension for 33404, and four percent for the school district. So you will notice that both for Riviera Beach and for the school district as a whole, the out-of-school suspension rate went down some. The absenteeism rate went up. Okay, who's going to their assigned high school? You'll see the numbers for 33404. Sixty-nine percent of those who are assigned to Palm Beach Gardens choose to go to Palm Beach Gardens. Thirty-three percent of those who are assigned to Palm Beach Lakes go to Palm Beach Lakes. And again, those are small numbers. And sixty-seven percent of those assigned to William T. Dwyer attend William T. Dwyer. And so I'm gonna guess that those numbers for Palm Beach Lakes will go up when they find out about the Fire Academy. So, I forgot to brag about that before, so. Now, schools in Riviera Beach without boundaries. So we have Suncoast, Inlet Grove, and Riviera Beach Prep. So, again, this data is the percent of students attending the school that live in 33404. For Suncoast, it's eight percent. For Inlet Grove, it's twelve percent. For Riviera Beach Prep, it's forty-five percent. Now, I'm gonna say now, that one of the things I hope we collaborate on is how to improve those numbers attending Suncoast. And I have some suggestions that I will share at another time. But let me say now, if you have a student that lives in Riviera Beach, that applies to Suncoast and meets the criteria for the program, and they don't get in, I ask you to let me know, okay? Because I can't chase it with vague generalities. I can chase it with specific students. Riviera Beach Prep. Mark Simmons is in his second year as principal at Riviera Beach Prep. The former principal, Elaine Hubbard Williams, moved up to be Director of Support Services. So the prep is an academic alternative ed school, and it's primarily for students who have been struggling in the large schools. And I must say that they, they really give these young folks the attention, that they need the coaxing, the push, the encouragement, sometimes maybe the dragging and kicking, but, you know. And so, they do not get school grades. They get an alternative rating, and so they got commendable and maintaining. Suncoast, you know. Suncoast has a brand-new principal, Catherine Kerner. There she is. Okay. After the Karen Wetzel moved up to be an Instructional Superintendent. So, we all know, Suncoast has a long, intense relationship with the community in large part based upon the circumstances of its birth as a magnet school. So, again, I want us to work together so that more and more Riviera Beach children qualify to attend and are successful at completing the programs there. So you may or may not know that when Suncoast was built at its current location, the plan was to have a K-12 IB campus. So we have elementary IB at Bethune, Middle School JFK, and then at Suncoast. And so, we have to make this vision real in terms of preparing students and supporting them so that they can march through this International Baccalaureate Program and graduate and go on to do all the great things that they're destined to do. And Inlet Grove. Okay, please tell Emma I have a slide for Inlet Grove, okay? So Inlet Grove is a shining star, and you know it. Led by Emma Banks, the little lady that dared to dream, right? And we'll leave it there, right? So Inlet Grove is a conversion charter school, earned their second A, very proud of it. And so I will tell you that, you know, Inlet Grove is housed at the old Suncoast campus. And so we are now working on plans on how we address the facility needs of both Riviera Beach Prep and Inlet Grove. And that remains to be determined, right? All right, and so, in terms of solutions, as I come to the end of my part of the presentation, I just want to show you what can happen. Now, maybe this isn't the best slide of all, but, so you may or may not know that several years ago, I started the Riviera Beach Pre-K Collaborative, which is a group of ten private pre-K providers that served the Riviera Beach community. And so we've been meeting under, under the, with a mission of saying that we want to provide a high-quality pre-K education for every three- and four-year-old in Riviera Beach. So, you know, that's, that's a huge lift. We're still working on it, but we're very clear that we have to Don, does the other one work right there, the middle one? Okay, we're back in business?
Yes.
And so, what this, what this graph will show you, this is comparing kindergarten readiness in August of 2016 with August of 2017. And if you can see it, I don't think I put this in your backup, I'm sorry, because it's hard to see. But what it shows is that Riviera Beach, the private pre-Ks in Riviera Beach were the only segment in Palm Beach County that increased their kindergarten readiness, okay? The only ones. Other communities went down, everyone's running around trying to explain it. So, you know, Early Learning Coalition attributes this to the Riviera Beach Pre-K Collaborative. And so, we want to, at this point, we had only been working together for one year, so we expect the data to show more and more improvement. And we really want to thank Senator Bobby Powell, who has, for two consecutive years, filed appropriations. And so the Riviera Beach Pre-K Collaborative got additional monies for curriculum, professional development, and parent engagement. So we expect to improve the readiness coming in. And so, now, any questions on that part?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead. A couple of questions. Thank you for your presentation. It was enlightening. There are schools that I didn't know were actually serving Riviera Beach kids, so it opened my eyes. How many of our kids actually go to Grove Park? I, I see, I could see the percentage of, that's the one slide I'd like to have information about. In every case, you said, in that school, for example, Inlet Grove has twelve percent of, twelve percent of the population in Inlet Grove is from Riviera Beach. But what I would like to know is, what percentage of our kids go to Gardens, for example? Because we started working with Gardens, and we were told that about seventy percent of our kids go to Gardens. That's kind of something that I would love to have information about. What percentage of Riviera Beach kids go to each of the schools you mentioned? And my other question is, if they're not going, you had good, good information about, you know, percentages of kids looking for, who choose to go elsewhere. Where do they go? Are there charter schools that are gobbling them up? And what's the relationship with any of the charters? And I've been very disappointed in, when I meet some, when I meet kids who've been at some of the charters, and they're maybe in eighth grade, and they're still not reading. And that's not one kid. I'm talking about many kids who are particularly over at Stony Brook. So I'd like to know, you know, where do they go if they don't go to the home schools? Do they go to other, other public schools, or do they go primarily to charters? And then, why do we continue to have out-of-school suspension? I mean, is there, are schools thinking about alternatives in school suspension? I mean, to me, it's like just another vacation day, you know? I was bad, so I got sent home to play on my computer, or to play whatever, all day at home. It just doesn't make sense to me that we continue to do this as educators. So just wondering if there's been any effort to have in-school suspension as an option to out-of-school suspension. Then, let's see, I think that's it for now.
All right, do you have any answers to the questions?
You want to answer? Come on. Okay, Dr. Coleman is itching to respond, okay.
There are some offenses that require out-of-school suspension. It's not negotiable. There are, all of our schools have some type of in-school suspension. In-school suspension, alternatives to suspension. But, for example, any type of weapon on campus. Most of the schools have an automatic, you fight, it's ten days, because it starts, and if it's in open areas, such as a cafeteria, where it presents danger for large quantities of students, then they are automatically suspended.
Can I follow up? So, those numbers for out-of-school suspensions are typically for violent kind of episodes, and for, okay?
They're level three or four offenses, fighting, could be it could be drugs, it could be weapons on campus, any of those types of things, threats.
So it's not just, you looked at it crosswise?
No one's getting suspended for talking too much. We like it. Talk to us.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right, you can go ahead and finish.
I'm sorry, one last thing. Could we please have all of those slides?
Yes.
Because we don't have, yeah, it'd be great to have, thank you.
Yes, they were sent to, yes. So I would like to respond too, because it triggered a thought. So, the other thing is that we're moving, we're not done yet, but we're moving towards establishing a policy where children are only expelled for the offenses that by law require expulsion, okay? So, and let me say this. There are some children that do some very, very, very bad things, okay? Okay. So, we, we are making, I think, a lot of progress in terms of how we look at students. For example, I'm gonna tell you this, I am very proud of our school police, because over time, we've worked with them so that they, they do not arrest students the way their original training might have taught them to. And they understand that part of their role is to redirect and to support and guide, right? So we're moving away. Our numbers for out-of-school suspension are dramatically down. They're not zero. And because we have put in, we have layers of people to address social, emotional, and mental wellness issues now, it is my expectation that those numbers will go down even more, because hopefully we will address their issues before their behavior escalates.
Thank you. One, I keep saying one last button, this is it. I was happy to see that Washington is using Avid. And I wonder if, because I'm very familiar with that program, I'm wondering if it's, how successful is it being? Are you measuring those rates of succession, of success? And the programs that you find to be successful, like Avid, and I'm sure it probably is, how do you migrate those programs to other elementary schools in the system?
So let me, so first off, that is their first year with Avid. We measure everything. There is more data in the school district that you ever want to see. We can slice it, dice it every which way, right? But, let me just say this. In talking to young people who've been in Avid, who were in Avid programs when I was talking to them, and I asked them about making Avid like the norm, why don't we just do this for everybody? The students said, everybody's not gonna do this. Everybody is not dedicated enough to do this, right? So my hope is that in elementary school, as we elevate the expectations and entice them to respond to those expectations, that that will become the norm. But middle school and high school will tell you, everybody's not gonna do it. So it tends, this is not the right word, but I'm gonna use it anyway, tends to be a bit of an elitist program in middle school and high school, okay? Any other questions? Okay, so I would like to now introduce to you Dr. Mary Ann DuPont. Dr. DuPont, oh, my notes are not here. So Dr. DuPont is my mentor, okay? So when I'm out of line, I'm gonna just tell you. When I'm out of line, call Dr. DuPont. She'll get me straight. Okay, she's the one I will hear. If she tells me the moon is purple and green stars, I'm gonna try to figure out how come I can't see these purple and green stars, okay? Dr. DuPont retired as Assistant Superintendent of Quality Assurance at the school district. I could tell you, when I first came to know her, before I got on the school board, and before she retired, every time I saw her at the school district, she had a little angel pin on, which tells you what you need to do to walk up in that building. Without further ado, I would like to introduce Dr. DuPont.
Thank you. Especially my family members back there. First of all, I have to say, when I saw the marquee outside that read, "Back to School, Believe It and Achieve It", that set the tone for this presentation, the part that I have to do. Because, you know, that beliefs control practices. So what we believe can determine what we achieve. And so, this work, the presentation I'm gonna share with you is based on Jeff Howard's work at the Efficacy Institute. And when you think about children getting better, stronger, and smarter, you think about, well, how do we go about doing that? And also in the district mission statement, when you mentioned that, and I know you all share, that all the children, you do want them to achieve high academic and character standards. No question. You also would love it if nobody was suspended. So you think, well, how do we go about accomplishing that? So development means, how do we get better, stronger, and smarter? Now, there's two ways to think about it. And according to the Jeff Howard Group, one way is this. You know, sometimes you notice, as people go through age, you know, they age, some of them get better, stronger, and smarter, and then some people simply just get older. So there's two ways that you can look at, there's two models of belief. And the first one is this Brain's Theory. And this theory says, there are three kinds of people. There's very smart, sort of smart, and then kind of dumb. Now, the very smart people, you know, these are the ones, even our children, we expect them to be in the International Baccalaureate Program IB. We expect them to take Advanced Placement AP. And then we also have like sort of smart. Now, these are the people that, we say they're smart enough to learn some things, but not math and science. They'll be excellent in English, Social Studies. And then the KDs, this theory says, these are people who are just not smart enough to learn anything. And what we do, we make jokes about those people. Sometimes we say, they're not as sharp as a knife in the drawer. Their elevator doesn't go to the top floor. You know, we make all kind of comments about them. Now, according to this innate ability model, a person's ability and character are fixed at birth. That is, they can't change it. Either you have it, or you don't. Some groups have it, some groups don't. And then, the individual has no control over how they can improve their academics and character. We're looking at both. And so when they encounter failure or difficulty, it sets limits in their development. Now, Ziegler said, "Our children are born to win, but two men are conditioned to lose." And so what happened, based on your belief, if you believe in this Brain's Theory, you are conditioning children to lose. Because what this, this theory has done, it has hurt many children over the years and lead them to believe that they're not intelligent. So when people start to think that they're dumb, it's useless to try, they give up at failure or difficulty. And in many cases, they just drop out of learning. And therefore, their development stops, and then they become a coaxed spirit in their own self. And then they become a coker's spirit and they're own self-destruction. But another way to look at this is to reject the Brain's Theory. And what we want you to do is think about what leads to development. This is the model of belief that we want you to embrace. And it's called the efficacy model, or the Get Smart Model. And that model says that effective effort leads to development. And development is based not on innate ability, but on the changeable and controllable characteristics of effort. That all those who can work can learn. You have to do the work. You have to put forth the effort. And here, by effort, the definition, we have tenacious engagement, intense focus on feedback, and ongoing strategy formulation on feedback. And what we have, the young people that stand, in fact, you have seen this. If you sit down playing video games, and you walk in and you got, like I say, a young child at home, and you say something to them, like they ignoring you. They're not ignoring you. They're literally engaged in what they're doing. And, and, and so, and they also give themselves feedback. They're looking and thinking about it. Well, what is that I can do better? And then they also come up with a strategy formulation to do better. So when a child get, receive a, say, a test paper back, and just pretend it had maybe like a D on it. Most times, what they would do, they'd take it and just crumble it up. But what we want them to be able to do, take a look at it and say to myself, what did I do well on? What did I miss? And then what do I need to work on? And so that way, you empower them to put forth the effort. Another thing about effective effort, what you see children doing, that's what they're gonna be good at. Now, if you see them reading a lot, they'd be good at reading. If you see them playing football all the time, they'd be good at playing football. If you see them playing basketball, they'd be good at that. And so whatever you see them doing is what they're gonna be good at. Now, what is the cause of them to put forth effective effort? And that's confidence. And that's the idea of knowing that I can do something, or I can learn it. And what you want to do with young people is to make sure you build their confidence. And the confidence is so different from self-esteem. It's not the same thing. Confidence is the belief in one's ability and your capacity to learn. Self-esteem is belief in one's capacity worth of value. And when I speak to the young people, what I share with them, they have their self-esteem. They have it going on, you know, because they have the beauty. In fact, I tell the young ladies, you know, they have the weave and the lashes and all of that. They know they're looking good. I say, I'm the senior citizen. I'm the one who need to weave. I need eyelashes and all of that, you know? But the question become, do they have the confidence to know that they can earn an A in algebra? They can earn As in chemistry? And so that's what we want to do, is build their confidence. That's the key. Now, if you tear the confidence down, then they don't put forth the effort. Another point we want to make here is, all children, and all of us, all of you, you have enough intellectual capacity for challenging, complex work. You have to know and understand that. They have it. And a proof of this is this. By the time a child is maybe about, maybe two and a half, or to maybe three or four years old, they have learned a language. They have learned a language. And when I say to, you know, to the young people, and also to the parents, say when your child was born, and we carried them over to China, we go back three or four years later, what would they be speaking? Chinese. Go the same thing. Go to Germany, come back three or four years later, what would they be speaking? German. And then we look at that child when they walk in and say, well, wow, that kid is really smart. Those are your children. They have the capacity to do it. They have enough. We're not saying everybody has the same amount. They have enough to do that. And what you have to understand too, now, if you don't believe that, now you go learn a language. You go learn something that you don't already know. And you see what that takes. And what we want to say also about this particular model is, young people can develop their intellectual ability and character throughout life. And you know, you all do that all the time. Plenty of time, you're encountered with a new project. You might have a new idea, something you want to try that's different. You know, you have that sense of, yes, I can do this. And it's not, can I do it? But how do I go about, how can I do this? And adults who understand can build young people's confidence. Whatever you do within the city of Riviera Beach, make sure that's a part of the focus, that you build their confidence, create that environment so they can put forth effective effort, and you see that they will develop. But then, for you to want to build their confidence, that depend on your belief. Do you really believe that they can achieve high academic and character standards? Then if you do, you do what you need to do to help them. And also, then they can see that failure and difficulty are simply feedback. You know, I told someone years ago, my grandmother used to make wonderful cornbread. And I say, wow, I want to make cornbread like my grandmother. And you should have seen that first batch of bread that I made. It was lumpy. It was, it had some height to it. I don't know how it got so high. And it did not come out right. The crust was all crazy. But I did not give up on it. Because I kept checking around with different people. Say, well, what to do? Some people suggested buttermilk. And so eventually, I got better at doing that. And so that particular model, that's what it said. Look at failure and the feedback. That's what caused the children to get better, strong, and smarter. And what I have here, this Booker T. Washington video.
Did you? Let's see what to play that.
And this is an example of a young man who used the efficacy model. This young man actually embraced that model.
Okay. Did it, Walter?
The link, you can click on, click on the link.
Are you able to click on that link?
Yeah. Yeah.
You have to click on it. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Dupont at this time? We're waiting for the video. You do, Mr. Lawson? Your head said yes.
You know, I do, I would like to say, since he's working on that, is...
You have to come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Okay. What I would like to say, this is part of a presentation I do called Wake Up, Step Up for Proficiency. I do it for parents and all in the community. And what you get, you just get excerpts from it. We literally have exercises that we go through. So tonight, I know this, tonight is a sit and get. So that's why I did not include those other activities that is a part of it.
I have a question. So Dr. Dupont, I think you used to work, have like a parent university or some sort of program for the parents' trainings? Do you still do that?
Now, you know what I do, and I love doing it. I go to the community. For example, I just got an invitation to return to Connect the Greatness in Boynton Beach. And I literally work with the parents, and then share information with them. Because they have to be the ones, first of all, have them understand that the targets with the Florida Standards Assessment is like a level five, period. That's a understanding. That's the target. However, what we do, I bring in information that they need. So I sort of customize that to their need. And so the last time I was with them, some of them actually wanted some practice exercises for the FSA. And I literally, rather than telling them to go to this website, I literally have copies made and deliver that to them. And so they use that. And so that's the way I work. I don't like to be a drive-by supporter. I go back and forth sometime like three or four times a month, like to one organization. Because the parents are the ones who have to do the work. And when I work with them, I tell them, I don't want to hear if the schools would do this, if the teachers would do this, if the administrators would do this. I want them to do their part. Because what I want, what I'm showing them is, like, just the organs in your body. Your heart is just as essential as your lungs, as your liver. But the point being, you got to do your part. Your part has to be done. And so that's the way I work with them. And when we go to the schools, I accompany them to schools. Occasionally, some of them feel a little intimidated if they're the only one there, and you know, the different district people are with them. But when we go, I make it clear to them, when we leave, the schools are gonna do what it need to do, and you have to do what you need to do. And the first time I did, told a group of parents, they look at me, saw the cross-eyed, you know? But then, when they went through the experience, they understood that children need backup. You know, so it's because the schools cannot do it alone. They have, they have to have backup. That's why I appreciate you all so much. Dr. Robertson, in terms of the collaborative, recognizing what has to be done.
And the hope of the slave, I rise. To quote the words of the famous writer and poet, Langston Hughes, "Life for me ain't been no crystal stair. I have been negatively stereotyped by society. Enticed with drugs. Overwhelmed with my mother's diagnosis with leukemia. Robbed at gunpoint. And experienced the death of my brother. Despite the attacks, splinters, and torn boys, still, I rise. I did not allow my personal problems to serve as excuses. Because I understood each problem has a solution. And that solution lies within me. My faith in God and my ability to overcome adversity and make rational decisions has resulted in my academic success. I am committed to education, and I choose to do what is necessary, not what is popular. I stayed up until the wee hours of the morning completing assignments. I met required deadlines. And I embraced the challenges of several advanced placement courses. Without the grace of God, the nurturing of my parents, Paris Hardaway and Ernest Bridges, the support of my family, and the commitment of educators, I would not stand here today as an anti-defamation league unsung hero. A BTW freedom rider. A recipient of the prestigious Emory University ML King Four Scholarship. A Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity and Omega Psi Phi fraternity scholar. A George W. Bromley Project grad scholar. And a recipient of the Gates Millennium Scholarship. Which will cover all of my expenses for my undergraduate and graduate studies. Had I given up, I would not stand here today as a possessor of more than $1 million in scholarship funds. Had I given in. I would not stand before you today, honored and humble, to be the first African-American male valid at torn at Booker T. Washington High School in more than a decade. However, Sherwin and I are not the only success stories of Booker T. Washington High School Senior Academy. Class of 2010. Please join me in saluting those who are making impact in healthcare and nutrition. Those who have blazed the paths in the fields of athletics and fine arts. Those who have tantalized our taste buds. Those who are journeying toward touching the future as educators.
Still, we rise.
Those who are redefining the banking and finance industry. And those who will protect our nation, to ensure a safer, stronger tomorrow. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, we rise into a daybreak that's wondrously clear. We rise. Bringing the gifts that our ancestors gave. We are the hope. We are the dream. We rise. We rise. We rise.
It's down at the bottom. You see it at the bottom? To the right? Oh, that's up. Yeah, that's up.
That's what I want to share with you. When, remember when I talked about the efficacy model? The reason I demonstrate that young man, to me, is timeless. Because he, that model says, smart isn't something that you are. Smart is something that you get. And that's what the children have to understand. You get smart. You have to put forth the work. And, and so under confidence, because of time, I just read one of the statements that he made. Remember, he said, "I embraced the challenge of several advanced placement courses. Under effective effort", remember, he said, "I stayed up until the wee hours of the night, of the morning, completing my assignments." And then under development, he mentioned, he got over $1 million in scholarships. And I was fortunate several years ago to meet one young man who put the down payment on his first house with scholarship money that he earned. And those, and that's what you want to steal in your children. If you put that particular model in them, so they know that smart isn't something that I am, smart is something that I get. I get smart by working hard. You have to create that environment to make that happen for them. And you look at the adversities that he had. Now, he could have easily given up. And he did not give up. And so with me, when I meet with my parents, that's what I have to understand. I have my own definitions about things. That there's a difference between the excuse and a reason. Now, if you have a reason, you cannot say, make it to the meeting tonight. Maybe transportation or whatever. We work that out. We take care of that. However, if you want an excuse, I can't deal with the excuses, but the reason. So that's when I work the parents. And so we now would go with Dr. Robertson, unless you have any question. But the key thing is just have children understand that smart isn't something that I just am. Smart is something that I get. And I get smart by working hard, putting forth effective effort.
Thank you. Did you all have any questions for Dr. Dupont? All right. We'll go on to Dr. Robertson.
Thank you. So each of you... And so my request is that you consider, as part of this partnership, reactivating your education advisory board. Creating an education foundation. Because simply put, we have to, in, for, uh-oh. What's going on now? Okay. So we, I'm asking you to consider creating the Riviera Beach Education Foundation so you can decide how you want to apply additional investments in supporting the young people on their, on their path. There's an awful lot of attacks on public education. And there's no expectation that funding is going to be increasing. Okay. There's, we talk about equity. And so part of equity is putting the resources where they're most needed. And I hope that you will join me and add your voice to mine in terms of making that a reality. I'm gonna ask you to consider funding and hiring an education liaison. The model is in the city of Delray Beach. They have a full-time education liaison for many years. They have a full-time education liaison for many years. Maybe it's part-time, but just somebody who could be in the schools and communicating with you with a specific focus on the Riviera Beach School. I'm gonna ask you to consider adopting, have each councilperson adopt a school. Maybe have lunch there with some degree of regularity, attend the events there. I'm gonna ask you to consider following the lead of Councilwoman Lania and have listening sessions with teachers at your adopted schools. What a bright idea. So, many of us remember the day when we were walking home from school and all the neighbors would ask to see your report card. Let's bring that back to Riviera Beach, right? Maybe the marquee says, "Report cards are out." Ask the babies, okay? Because we have to tell them that we believe this is important. And if, if they need assistance, we're there. You know, Dr. Dupont will tell the story about her grandmother who could not read or write, but who would sit up with her in the evenings when she was doing her homework in college? And when she was in college? And just say, "Baby, do you need anything?" She couldn't help her with her homework, but she showed her support for her efforts to get her college degree by being there and asking if she needed anything. So we need to reengage the village, right? And my own personal thing that I'm gonna ask you to consider, I was gonna do this privately, but I, I really want to create a system where every student, at least elementary and middle school in Riviera Beach participates in after-school activities until at least six or seven. That way, we can support them academically. We can make sure that they have mind-enhancing activities. We could take them on field trips. We could bring people from different career fields in to expose them. We could have introduction to various, we could do all kinds of outstanding things in, in that space, right? And so I'm hoping, and I'm hoping to, to work with you on that. And before I keep going, I want to acknowledge the principal of Lincoln Elementary has ran from her SAC meeting to join us, Ms. Alicia Porter. And then moving on, so petition, potential partnership activities to join the Riviera Beach pre-K collaborative. So, oh, there's my bullet on the after-school. The safe walk to and from school, that's a big issue, right? A lot of young people who have become affiliated with cliques will tell you that they join their clique to be safe between the bus stop and home. And then also to continue to show the educators that you care, because the event on Friday was outstanding. And now, let's see if I can figure it out. One more video, and then we'll be bringing this presentation to an end. So now, as you're watching this, think about the data that we've looked at. What am I supposed to do to make this big?
To the right, to the right.
Thank you.
Get two children, one from a middle-income family, the other from one of the millions of low-income American families. As the two kids head off to kindergarten, look what happens. The middle-income child starts out with a six-month lead. The low-income child is already falling behind because of a lack of access to early reading and preschool education. During their year in kindergarten, in the same school and classroom, the two children will learn at about the same rate, so we'll move them both forward nine months. But look what happens in that first summer between kindergarten and first grade. Our middle-income child moves ahead about a month in reading because learning of one kind or another continues over the summer. The low-income child falls back about two months. So when school begins again, when they go back for first grade, the gap between them has already widened. During first grade, again, they move ahead at about the same rate, another nine months. That next summer, the activities and lifestyle of the middle-income family keep that child moving forward. But the low-income child has fewer opportunities to reinforce good habits like reading, and that child falls farther behind. Then we come to second grade, and again, our two children learn at the same rate. But the summer after second grade sets our low-income child back again. And our middle-income child moves forward again. And the gap widens again. By just the third grade, the two children are already far apart. By the end of fifth grade, the gap between the children is two and a half to three years. It will keep growing through middle school. So you see, without addressing what's happening during the summer, it is impossible to ever catch up. It's impossible to close the gap. No matter how much high-quality learning goes on from September to June, every year, the gap widens.
Okay, tell me what to do. Thank you. And so... And so you see, I titled this, now multiply this by centuries. Right? So, my new definition for equity is educational reparations. I need you to partner with me to make sure that we get the children in Riviera Beach where they need to be. Because the school district is not gonna do it alone. I thank you for your attention, and I'm open for any additional questions.
Madam Chair. I started an education foundation a few years ago. And I've worked closely with Lincoln and now more recently with Washington Elementary to provide experiences for them. Holiday parties and the like. It's just called the Friends of the Riviera Beach Schools. How would the foundation that you would like to see developed differ from that? Is it something that you would consider expanding upon? Or would you like to just create, scrap that and create something different?
Well, so I really think this is a conversation for the council. But since you asked my opinion, I think that should be scrapped and start all over. I think that there's a lot of nuances to making this happen in a way that will really work. I believe that staff has already started accumulating information from other areas about education foundations. So I think that that needs to be studied. I think the education advisory board is a relatively quick thing to get started. I intend to attend every meeting. I would hope that that board would ask for follow-up data, such as what you asked for, and then we analyze the meaning of that and then determine what do we do to work together, right? In order to improve whichever outcome we're looking at.
The other thing I have a question about is, we're gonna be starting an after-school career awareness program at JFK. I did not know until today, till this evening's presentation, and I thank you for that, that our kids had other choices at the middle school level. I was told that, well, if you're, if you go to public education in Riviera Beach, you're gonna go to JFK. I only recently found out, and Keshaw helped me understand that, that some of our kids go to Bear Lakes. I found that out because we gave out backpacks at Stony Brook. And as I gave out a backpack, I'd say, "Now, where are you going?" "Oh, Bear Lakes." I'm thinking, "Where's, what happened?" I thought everybody was going to JFK. So, in this after-school program that we want to start, we should be thinking about the kids in other middle schools. I hadn't even been aware that they were there. Should we be replicating that program at other middle schools? Or should we be busing kids to JFK to take advantage of that?
So, all right, so I think we need to get it right before we start busing people in or replicating, right? So, you know, and thank you for inviting me to the, your upcoming meeting. When we, I pushed in at JFK two years ago to basically bombard the principal with, with my vision of this extended after-school program. And, and they made it work. And, and because the culinary arts teacher would cook dinner for the kids before they left, because they didn't leave until seven, right? There would be like a hundred to a hundred twenty-five kids there. And so we were able to bring other programs in. So, but it has to be much more than just this career programming, right? And we could work on that. I'm, I got plans. Now, I mean, I could sit down and tell you what I hope to see. I don't think that's appropriate at this moment. But, but yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to work on it. A significant portion of it would require that Parks and Rec works with us, right? But yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to work on it.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I want to ask, what is your, what is your definition, expand a little bit on educational reparations?
Okay. So, I think it's, well, I use the term reparations because most people understand what reparations is. And that's the concept of repaying the debt owed from, from the years of enslavement and the denial of opportunity. And I think that that applies to education as well, right? So, I think that there is, and actually, you can Google an article about edu, is about, from the achievement gap, educational debt. And it talks about how, for example, if I use something simple, both my parents went to college. Therefore, they set the expectation that I was going to college. Like, I went from kindergarten to first grade, I was going from twelfth grade to college, right? They also set the expectation that I was gonna do well in, in school. And they set that expectation, not just for me, but for my teachers and everybody in the school, right? Now, and they felt empowered to do that. So, if you have a parent who did not go to college, who themselves had a negative experience in formal education, right? Then, there's a gap there in knowledge and empowerment for them to pass on to their children. That's part of the debt. And I say that that debt applies over centuries, right? It's actually, if you look at that video and then apply that over centuries, it's amazing the gaps aren't much larger than they are, right? I mean, so, I mean, there's a whole lot of categories for the educational reparations, right? But, and, but let me say this. And because I use the term reparations, people might view it as, as just financial. But I mean, I mean much, much more than that, right? So, the real thing that's gonna get a child engaged in their own education is a caring adult that they want to prove themselves to, right? So, or some, some lure for them to be engaged in their own education, right? So, my oldest son graduated from Suncoast IB program, not because he wanted to do IB, not because he had this internal motivation for learning, right? It's because I told him, "Yeah, okay, well, you wanna dribble that basketball, you gonna do IB," right? So, he played varsity four years, and he did IB. And he knew that I would, like, snatch their uniform off in the middle of the game if I got a bad report, right? And so, that's a lure to get him to engage, because it's something that he wants. It wasn't education, right? Until he woke up, like, in his junior year, and then went, "Oh, wait, maybe I do want to learn," right? But until he got to that point, it was the basketball lure, right? And then, and for many children, the lure would change, you know, like, every three months. You might have to change your strategy, right? You know, one of my sons struggled with reading most of his academic career. But he read for Mr. Mosley in high school. And his, his reading performance just skyrocketed because he wanted to make Mr. Mosley proud, right? Well, he's a civil engineer now. And I'm gonna credit Mr. Mosley and Dr. Crutchfield for that, right? But, but because I have, I have, I have generations of education in my family, right? And because I know how important it is, I was able, and because I am so very blessed, I was able to create these lures for them, right? Or to sit in the principal's office all day long until I got him in the right classroom, or whatever. Everybody is not so blessed. And so for some children, for example, the kids who want to play in the rec football program, right? Now, imagine how much attention they're gonna pay in class if there's a connection between the coach and the English language arts teacher. And the English language arts teacher says, "I'm gonna tell Coach, you did such a good job today," right? That's the kind of connection I want us to start making, right? Because we have to make up for this debt. And we have to make up for it in, in multiple ways. But the most important part is the humanity in it. But some of that humanity, we can't get without an investment of dollars, right? So it's not just throwing more resource, right? If you look at our schools, if you compare the dollars going into each school, and they're divided by the number of students, some of the schools in Riviera Beach have almost twice as many dollars per student going in as some other schools, okay? It's not dollars, right? It's the debt. And the debt is, is, is paid through humans. But we gotta pay the humans, right? And we gotta get the kids to engage in their own education. And, and that's, I mean, the outstanding teacher is the one who gets you from doing this to sitting up leaning forward and paying attention. That's the outstanding teacher. I don't care what their credentials say. That's the outstanding teacher. Did that make sense?
Yes, hold on one second. Someone has a dark gray Honda Accord in the parking lot, and the trunk is open. Dark gray Honda Accord. And also, Mayor Felder is not here tonight because his wife is ill, but he did text me, he wanted me to let everyone know that he wants to adopt JFK as his, as the mayor of school, so, that one's taken. Now, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
He beat you to the punch.
Doc, thank you for the presentation tonight. Can you give us some recommendations on who you would advise to sit on the foundation board? We have a resolution that we've actually, the education foundation, we have a resolution that we passed in previous years. But based on your experience and what you've seen around the board, who would you recommend to the board?
The education advisory board?
Advisory board, yes.
Okay. I would like to do that off record.
Absolutely, thank you.
Is that, do you recall, Mr. Evans, is that one where each councilperson nominates someone? Or is it open application? Because I know some of the advisory boards, we do, we are allotted a person to place on the board. And some of them are open.
I reviewed it recently. It's a recommendation from every council member and the mayor, two high school students, and I believe a community liaison as well.
Okay, all right, so that took care of that. And we did reactivate it, but we just have not put the applications out and appointed anyone to it. Anyone else have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So I'm clear, Dr. Robinson, what's the correlation between the advisory board and the foundation? Are they two independent?
Well, depends on how you make it, right? But I would hope that the founda, I would hope that the advisory board would make recommendations either directly to you or to the foundation and you on how the foundation would allocate their monies.
And you said there's a model in a different city?
The, for the education liaison is in Delray.
But in terms of foundations, there are a number of schools, like Suncoast, Dwyer. Are there any elementary or middle schools that have foundations, do you know?
I think Bach might have a foundation, yeah. Bach has a foundation, Inlet Grove has a foundation. But there's also a Palm Beach County Education Foundation. So I'm not aware of other cities that have an education foundation. I would...
I've done some research on other cities, not, not local in Palm Beach County, but there are quite a few of them out there where I did receive some information when we were looking at it before. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm no longer on the education foundation, but it's now being run by four directors. And I think they would welcome an opportunity to sit and speak with you about what they are doing, what their plans are, so...
Which foundation?
The Friends of the Riviera Beach Schools.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
Madam Chair, if I may. Dr. Robinson, has there been any conversations in regards to looking at the school schedule as it... as it relates to seeing the deficiencies or the issues as it relates to the summer, going to more of a year-round program? I don't, I didn't want to say that with all the teachers in the room. But I wanted to ask the question. If we see that there is some concern with respect to young folks from kindergarten all the way to the fifth grade, is there an opportunity whereby we as a city provide those stopgap measures to, maybe you have a reading camp or a science camp as opposed to your traditional type of sports camp? And then, the other side of it, have you seen any city look at it, at their recreational programming to say, you know, there is scholastic achievement that's tied to you participating in youth basketball? So, just like in high school, you have to have a 2.0 or 2.5 GPA. Is there any communities that are taking that approach to say, "You know what, Jonathan, if you're going to go out there and play sports, you have to perform in the classroom, and student first, athlete second"?
I'm not aware of any cities that have taken that approach. I am aware, for example, some years ago with the city of West Palm Beach in the rec league for the summer camps, and I know because I worked it, is that we had the summer camp counselors get some kind of brief training on teaching reading skills. And then, there was a connection with the libraries, so that they brought books, rotating books through the summer camps for the kids. And they had reading time in the summer camps. But I'm not aware of any, any places that have said, "If you're not performing academically, you can't participate in the rec league." I don't honestly know how I feel about that. I want to lure them into, into performing. And I think we could do that. You know, maybe we say, you know, like, "You're on probation or something, and next year, if you don't have your grades up," or something, but...
Well, or you can, to your point, incentivizing it that, you know, if you have a certain score on your report card, the program's free for you.
Ah-huh.
And then, mom and dad say, "Okay, well, you know, you've got to, we don't want to spend $135 to those kinds of things." So, there's probably some things that we can look at.
Yeah. That's fantastic. And just to follow up on the scheduling piece, so, Katrina Granger at Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune is looking at putting in a request to make Bethune a choice school for a year-round school.
Are there any other questions or comments? Well, I think that your requests that you put forth to us are pretty reasonable. And I know some of them that have been around for a very long time. So, I know you're anxious to see a lot of this happen. I know in the past, we haven't done it in several years now, where we used to have an academic camp for the middle school students. And the city did fund that. Over time, it kind of faded out, but maybe that's something that we can take a look at from what was done in the past. That provided that safe place for the middle school students who tend to not be enrolled in any type of summer camp. So, there are a number of things that we can look at. And I'm sure we will all adopt a school. I know many of us do already provide some community benefits monies to a lot of the schools, so we've already kind of got that going. And I think they benefit pretty well from that. I definitely want to thank everyone for coming out. I know how difficult it is to have to go from one place to the next. Just think, "I'll still be here. You get to go home. I'll still be sitting here." But definitely appreciate it. And I want you all to know, we really are making education in Riviera Beach a priority on the city side, because we know if we don't, we don't contribute now, we will have to deal with those same kids later on in, you know, whether it's our legal system. And that's one of the things we want to try to make sure that we can prevent. If there are no other questions or comments from the board, Ms. Dr. Robinson, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Well, since I have the opportunity and the principals are here, let me just say to the elementary principals that I received a request that the elementary schools of Riviera Beach, that their fifth graders going to Washington, make sure they go to the National Museum of African-American History and Culture. So, I understand that's a scheduled, scheduling issue. So, so just please schedule it. Okay. But thank you so much. I am really, really looking forward to this.
We are too. We are too. I'm glad we were able to have this workshop.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll adjourn for about five minutes, or 7:40, do 7:45. And then, we'll come back for our budget workshop. Stand adjourned.